Okay, good evening, everyone. It's 6:00 PM on August 9th, 2022, and I will call the meeting of the town council to order. If we could please take a moment of silence to reflect on all those adversely affected by the many unfavorable situations happening both here and abroad. Thank you. In accordance with master under law, tonight's meeting is being audio and video recorded, and I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, please identify yourself by raising your hand. I don't see anyone. So our meeting tonight is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. All our votes tonight will be by roll call. We are going to jump right into public comments. I see, Jeannie, we have our Council of Aging Director Erin Kober signed up?
Yes, she's first, and then Ann Landry has signed up secondly for public comments.
So I have Ann, but I don't, oh, there's Erin, okay.
Just popped in.
All right, Erin's on her way. Yeah. So I'm on, I'm on the phone with Mary, and she's having trouble getting into meeting, so I'm working on that.
Thank you.
Hi, Erin, you're muted at the moment.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Are you ready for me just to go?
We are ready. Welcome, and it looks like you've got some information for us.
I do. I really just wanted to come and as part of the dementia-friendly Isla Meadow Initiative, offer an invitation to council members to our next dementia friends information session, but since I'm here, I will offer it to the rest of the residents of the Isla Meadow community. It will be held on Monday, August 15th at 10:30. I think a couple of you are signed up, so thanks so much. It is a very sort of basic informational session regarding what it's like to live with dementia, and then turns that, oh, sorry, understanding into action in the community. So thank you all, and thanks for your support of the dementia-friendly initiative. While I'm here, I will also invite you all to our discussion panel on September 14th at 6:00 PM at the Senior Center where we'll have a geriatrician, an elder law attorney, a care geriatric care manager, and a caregiver from our community to talk about how to manage a dementia diagnosis in a family member or a loved one. So, thank you.
So Erin, quick question for you. Do you have to register ahead of time for the dementia friendly? And if so, how?
Do not, but we would love for you to do so. You can call the Senior Center, 525-5436.
Perfect.
And it's open to everybody, not just, not just senior members of the community.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Erin? Okay, thanks, Erin. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, Don, I think next up is Ann Landry.
Okay, she should be on her way in, Ralph.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Erin. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Ann Landry?
Yes. My camera. My camera should be kicking on soon, but you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. So shall I go ahead even though I don't have video at the moment?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to. But you can hear me?
Yes.
So. Yes, Erin, we can still hear you. If you need to talk, you want to mute? Okay, Ann, you're on.
Okay. Sorry about the lack of video, but thank you for allowing me to speak today. I live at Ten Crescent Hill, and my extended family lives at 283 Prospect Street, and I'm very concerned about the safety of the intersection at Chestnut and Prospect Streets. The three-way stop sign there, situation where traffic needs to yield to vehicles that are traveling up the hill on Chestnut Street is confusing to motorists. When I travel up that hill, I'm never sure if the oncoming traffic is going to allow me to turn left on Prospect Street. When I'm driving through the intersection going south on Prospect, it's very difficult to see whether a car is driving east up Chestnut. The three-way stop sign at that four-way intersection confuses drivers as to whether they should stop and when they should proceed. My husband, Rich Brazzo, and I took a look at accident data that we got from the police department between July 1st, 2021, July 1st, 2022, and there've been 12 accidents there with four injuries, which is an average of one accident every 31 days, and at least half of those have been due to a failure to yield right of way. There are a number of attempts that have been made to manage the traffic there. There's a mirror. There are flashing lights. There are signs that say dangerous intersection. There are some small signs that say cross-traffic doesn't stop, traffic to the right doesn't stop, and then there are two 20 mile per hour signs going east up Chestnut Street up the hill. But the problem at the intersection, as I see it, is, is threefold. There's driver confusion. There's limited visibility of traffic that's going up the hill on Chestnut, and the cars going up that hill are going faster than the 20 mile per hour speed limit. We spoke to Bao Lang. He's the District 2 Mass DOT Traffic Highway Engineer, and he said that Mass DOT will not permit a four-way stop there. It wouldn't be safe for larger vehicles like school buses under slippery conditions. He also said the mirror that was installed there isn't permitted by Mass DOT. So along with eliminating the mirror, I'm proposing three changes to increase the safety at the intersection. One, to reduce the driver confusion. I think the signs need to be larger, the signs that say cross-traffic does not stop, traffic to the right doesn't stop, and put them at all three stop signs, so drivers understand that those, those vehicles going up the hill have the right of way. Minimize the visibility problem there by reducing the speed of traffic that's going up Chestnut. It is posted as 20 miles per hour, but I'm suggesting a speed hump there along with a speed hump sign, and then in addition to that, suggesting a radar speed sign for drivers going up that hill approaching the intersection so that they know to slow down, and drivers approaching the intersection can, can have a chance to see whether somebody's coming up that hill in case they do not yield. I think these issues can be addressed at a relatively minimal cost to the town. The state highway manual says speed humps are, can be installed for $2,000. And I just want to thank you for prompt attention to this safety issue that I think affects many individuals on a daily basis. So thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, next on the agenda, Marilyn.
Well, I don't know, is, is Ann gone? I just wanted to, I mean, I was hoping that she could submit in writing her key points of her discussion. I guess it'll be in our minutes because I think she did a lot of hard work, and, and we need to take a look at this. So that's all I wanted to ask was to have her submit it in writing, but that's okay. She's gone.
They're in our minutes, and I do expect that we'll submit it to the police department and ask their thoughts on it. I'm just concerned coming up that hill, I know in the winter, anytime you slow down or even stop on that hill, you just cannot get going again. And like she said, DOT basically said the same thing. Jeannie?
Ann is raising her hand, so maybe if you want to have her come back in briefly, it's up to you if she wants to.
Yeah, that, that would be fine, Don, if you could bring her back in.
Sure.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I'd be happy to send this, a copy of this, and where, to whom should I address it? To Jean? Okay, at the town hall. I will, I will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Do we have any council comments tonight? Okay. Town managers' report. Mary, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, I do. Sorry about my delay joining your meeting. I think I, getting a message, I need an upgrade on this laptop of some sort, but we'll deal with that tomorrow. So the report tonight is a bit briefer than usual. Trying to take advantage, I, as well as the department heads and many of our staff are enjoying some of their earned time off over the weeks of July and August, which is not to say that there's still not a lot going on, but the reports from the department heads have sort of been suspended for a month or two at my request. On August 2nd, as many of you know and saw you there, the National Night Out was a great success once again in town. The, you know, the purpose of this event is really a police motivated, police community relations event, and I think that our department accomplished that goal very well this year as well as in other years. There were many, many other town departments who had, which had booths set up for information about their services, and I'm sure that the residents learned a lot when they stopped at the various booths and engaged with our town staff. So it was a very nice evening. It was interrupted briefly by a downpour that lasted like all our rain does now for 30 seconds, and then it was over. But I think everybody who was there enjoyed the evening. On fiscal matters, the governor did finally sign the 50 fiscal 23 budget for the Commonwealth, and that has resulted in an additional $43,000 for our unrestricted local aid as well as additional Chapter 70 money, as well as school choice and charter reimbursement funding. All told, the town will receive an additional approximately $195,000 from the Commonwealth for, as a result of the conference committee out of the Senate and the governor's final approval. I wanted to take note of Steve Lonergan's report before he gets to it, just to give him and his department praise. There's an awful lot of work that goes into closing the fiscal year. And the detail and everything else that his staff had to go through, especially in light of their continuing staff shortages, was, was really a great accomplishment. So they were able to close out the year last week, and as Steve's going to mention in his report later about the turnbacks from the departments, there's another remarkable number for which I have to express great gratitude to all of the department heads and staff for their fiscal responsibility throughout fiscal 22. It's really been evidenced by these turnbacks as well as their day-to-day operations. We did begin our new trash services contract with Casella Management as of July 1. Their shiny new trucks are all over town. I passed a couple of them this morning on my way in. So far, all the collection routes are current. We've had no problems with that. The only difficulties to date that I've been made aware of are some administrative communication issues, and the health department staff is working hard to work on those issues, and I think they're being worked out satisfactorily. Many of our DPW projects that I mentioned at the last meeting that are being funded with ARPA money are underway. Probably have six or seven contracts that were signed in the last week. And so things are going forward with that. The design services on North Main Street is part of the TIP project, and there's also sidewalk installation on Parker Street, as I reference in my report, as well as the new gym floor at Meadowbrook. So in addition to that, we have applied for a park grant for the Heritage Park Development, as you know, and there'll be, I understand from Mr. Finney that on Thursday of this week, there's a representative from the Department of Recreation who wants to tour the site with him, just to get a feel for what we're trying to do there. So we're looking forward to that. Our new library director, Katie McGonigal, began her services here on July 18th. She was welcomed with open arms. She has enormous enthusiasm. I wish we could bottle it sometimes. She's been terrific. She just dove right into all of her duties at the library, and the staff has been extremely responding extremely well to her, and I'm sure the public, once they get to know her, will enjoy interacting with her. She's got a lot of pep, vim, and vigor, and about all things library. We are recruiting a new building commissioner as Kevin Duquette, our commissioner currently, is leaving the town as of Friday of this week. That'll be his last day. He's leaving for an opportunity with another, another municipality, which is quite larger than ours, and I think it presents a career opportunity for Kevin that he's been looking forward to for a while. On his exit interview with me, he did say that he thoroughly enjoyed his time in Isla Meadow, working here, and, and all the people that he works and interacts with on a daily basis. So it wasn't any sort of discontent. It was just a better opportunity, but in any case, we're sorry to lose him. We met as a board of the veterans, the Eastern Hampton District Veterans Board today because we are looking for a new veteran service officer. We haven't interviewed three people. So far, we've not made a decision about whom to hire, and the consensus of the board was that this is going to be a difficult position to fill because we understand that statewide several, many, many veteran service officers have resigned. And so those positions are just very hard to fill. So we're asking our veterans to be patient and as needed, if they could, they may have to reach out to the veteran service officer in Palmer or Wilbraham or Long Meadow for the short term. I did reappoint Michael Carabetta to the Conservation Commission and Frank Geman to the Council on Aging Board. And lastly, negotiations have resumed on the acquisition of 70 Maple Street. Bailey Mitchell and I have been talking a great deal about this potential for an overlay district on Maple Street. In fact, I asked Bailey to write a letter to the editor of the reminder, which he did, a copy of which is on the town's website, just to clarify some of the information that was in a recent article in the reminder that misstated some of the factual information about the proposal. So that's, that's about all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mary? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to minutes. We have the approval of the June 22nd, 2022, open session minutes. I have a motion.
I move to approve the June 27, 2022, open session minutes.
I second.
Okay, have an emotion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will call the roll. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Abstain.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay, next on the agenda is the June 27th Executive Session Minutes.
I'll motion to approve the June 27, 2022, executive session minutes.
I will second that.
Thank you, Connor. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. We will go right to the vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Abstain.
Matt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. The next minutes are July 12th, 2022, open session minutes.
I move to approve the July 12th, 2022, open session minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go right to the vote again. I am a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. And last, we have the July 12th, 2022, executive session minutes.
I make a motion to approve the July 12th, 2022, executive session minutes.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Right to the vote. I'm a yes. Connor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And Kathy?
Yes.
Perfect. That takes care of the minutes. Next on the agenda, we have communications, correspondence, and announcements. We received a letter from Ron Sanangelo. I believe all of you have received that in your packet. He's asked for a meeting, but at the last meeting, at our July 12th meeting, we took a vote to terminate contract negotiations. So I would ask now if there's any counselor who would like to make a motion to reconsider that vote that we took and reopen up discussions. So seeing no, no motion, we will move on to the next subject then. Jeannie, what time do we have? 6:21?
Not 6:30, right.
Public hearing is at 6:30. Do we want to move on to financial matters?
Sure, I will make a motion that we out of order to financial matters, 9B, until such time that it is 6:30, and we can return to the regular order of the agenda for the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Let's do a roll call vote then. I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
So we are moving on to financial matters, which is the Community Preservation Committee applications. So before we get into it, what I need to express to everyone is when we redid the codification in town under E-code, the CPC portion had been changed slightly. So any new application that comes to the town council under general bylaw section 185.3C needs to be done at a public hearing. Because we have one that's continued from January 11th by the Bark Park, we can hear that tonight, and like I said, but anything after this will have to be done at a public hearing. So is Jonathan available?
Hang on one second.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening, John. Could you give us a quick update on the Bark Park? Refresh our memory.
Yes, so just to give everybody a short background, about two or so years ago, the Bark Park Association that helps run that, the Bark Park and Heritage Park, came to us with a quest for a walkway, so we recommended, and then this town, this council voted to fund that first portion of the walkway. This is the second portion of the walkway. This is a, for a slightly larger amount, so the the total price of it, when it was sent to us, was $8,500. The request is for $7,500 to come from CPC with $1,000 coming from private donations, and this would be coming out of our open space and recreation fund. The only major difference was just a letter that was dated, that was sent to all of you a few days ago from Donna Prether, just indicating that the location of the dog park, there's no concrete plans at this time for it to be moved because there were some questions about whether it would be moved or not. So that is the only material change from when we previously had spoken or had a discussion about this a few months prior. So that's pretty much, I think, up to date.
Okay.
Where we stand.
So if I'm correct, I believe we just allocated 470,000 or so to do a full design and engineering of Heritage Park. I, I think that's, what, two months ago, three months ago, I believe we voted on that. So just so that the, the board's aware that we are looking at revamping the entire park. And again, we, I think it was the last meeting that Mary had told us that we had hired Berkshire Group to do the design phase and all on it. So am I correct, Mary?
Yes, yes, you're right, Ralph.
Okay, so I would ask now, do any counselors have any questions for Jonathan with regards to this? Kathy, I saw your hand first.
Thank you. I appreciate Donna Prether saying that there's no intention of moving the Bark Park, but do we know that for certain? We've just gone out to bid or, or offered the, the design award to a group that is going to look at the, coming up with a schematic, and what happens if recommendation comes back that the Bark Park ought to be cited somewhere else on the parcel after we allocate an additional $7,500 for the walkway inside the perimeter of the, the larger of the two areas? I'm not opposed at all to the concept. I just don't want to be sitting here in six or eight months when the report comes back, and there's a recommendation to place it somewhere else on the parcel.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that's definitely a possibility. I think this just confirms that there aren't really any concrete steps right now. What I would at least say to that, I think the location of it, being that it's right on the edge of the park, makes it easier so that other major developments could be made in other sections of the park. I know there's a question of sort of the entrance way. You know, the entrance way can always be changed because, you know, three quarters of it is, you know, touches upon, it's not just the section that touches upon that parking lot, so that entrance could always be changed, and, and things within it could be revamped, but, you know, something like this walkway, if it were to stay in that location, which I personally think it should, because it's worked, you know, well for this long, I don't see the walkway changing particularly. I mean, there's possibility that things could definitely be upgraded, the chips that are in the ground, some other recreational accessories. So I, I think it would be a good location to stay, though, that being said, of course, I am not the one that's going to be deciding where things go exactly. I know there's going to be, I would hope, a lot of community input on where different things will be going, so.
Matt, I saw your hand up.
So I've got, I guess, two questions, first of which is, just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the scope of the project is to, to create hardtop pathways within the Bark Park itself, within the fences?
Yes.
Okay, because it's difficult for the elderly or disabled or handicapped individuals to access the park.
Yeah, so making it, I think, easier for, you know, if you have, you know, a child in a stroller, or if you're an elderly person that is, you know, bringing their dog there, there's a, a small park for smaller dogs and a sort of bigger park for dogs. It would make it, I think, a little bit easier to navigate around.
Okay, and my second question is, within the, you know, 28 pages of materials on the application we received, there is a design of a new and improved heritage park. Is that just concept? Is that, that's not finalized? I understand there was a a study funded, but how does that relate? Is that just like a broad idea?
Yeah, I think that's a broad idea. I don't think they've rested on a, on specific locations of things, especially because I think there would still need to be some community input on that, and being that the CPC was also the one that, you know, approved this. Um you know, approved this money to start this sort of initiate this process of uh looking at revamping Heritage Park. So, yeah.
Alright, so so assuming there's public input put into the new design of Heritage Park, the Bark Park could conceivably. Stay where it is if the same folks that want it approved today come out and support it staying.
Uh yes, I would agree. I mean, I I would note, uh I've I've been on for only about three years, but out of the. I perhaps, maybe I'm getting this wrong, probably ten or twelve applicants, um and I'm sure uh Mary could make the test of this because some of them went to her email. I got more responses in favor of this project um than any other project uh by far. Uh there was a lot of public. Um input, at least a lot of emails that were sent uh at the time when we had a recommended it. Uh so I think, you know, I'm not, I'm not a dog owner myself, um but I do know a lot of people in the community that do utilize it. Um frequently, semi-frequently, um but it is, I think, a popular attraction in Heritage Park. It could definitely get revamped. But I think because it's sort of on the edge and out of uh the way of some of the main things, I think it makes it attractive to. To stay there, at least in my opinion.
And plus, just looking at it, it's kind of nestled within the wet the wetlands right there. It's kind of nuzzled up there, so I I personally doubt that it will be moved. Uh and I guess on top of that, and I don't know if John has this information or someone else here with. In terms of timeline for this Heritage Park project, when would we, if it moves or gets taken out, and let's say we. Funded or don't, when would the Bark Park be moved? Cause I'm I'm kind of trying to make the um cost benefit ratio analysis of. Considering the amount of people that use it, the support for it, is it worth funding the? Seventy five hundred dollars about to do so, if it's, you know, several years out, three, four, however many years out, or is this? Coming up quick, I guess, and I I don't know if John has that information or if someone else does, but uh my thinking out loud.
So I don't think anyone has that information, but Mary may have some input.
Well, I do. Um Mr. Fenny's in the audience and the the design has um already been uh. Open to public comment way back to two thousand sixteen, and I understand from uh from Bruce and the other. Um people that I've talked with, that the plan is to move the dog park to the rear, more towards the rear parcel, so. If you want to bring Bruce in, maybe he can comment more um specifically than I can, but um we think it's moving. Based on the design, so to Kathy's point about. Investing this money for a short term. I don't know when the construction will start versus the design phase, but it's over probably a two or three year period, so. Uh we think the dog park's gonna move. That's that's my point.
That is very good.
Oh, now.
Yep, so with that, Genie, I know we're supposed to have a public hearing at six thirty and it's beyond. Jonathan, can I ask you to stay around? Cause we've got another one coming in.
As long as we start the public hearing after six thirty, it's okay, so you can either continue this item and go into the public hearing, or like you say, interrupt. It's up to you.
What's the wishes? You want to continue?
Yes, yes.
I'm continuing this one and then we can go to the.
So we just brought Bruce in. Does he have any information as part of thought process? Um is this location um a possibility that it's gonna move to the northeast corner?
Um I believe so, Ralph, and obviously um one of the main concerns is is fields. Um so would speak with Donna and everything else. I want to add some fields in that location, uh but like you said, once the um. Wetland delineations have uh been completed, I'll get a better feel on what I can fit and where and how I can uh put things. Um so like you said, that's a prime piece of real estate um for fields right there, so. Our intentions is to uh obviously move that park up to the uh northwest corner.
Ralph, you see that uh Donna's also got her hand up.
If you want to bring Donna in, that'd be great. At this time, is there any other counselors that have any thoughts would like to to chime in? Marilyn?
Thank you, Ralph. Just hearing what we're hearing, I mean, the the merits of the project speak for itself. And you know, at one point, I would love to approve it to make it safer for the participants, but in the meantime, if it's gonna be moved, it will be a waste of money. And so I would be inclined to not move in the affirmative on the suggestion tonight with the idea that we would take it up as soon as it was possible.
Hi, Donna, how are you?
Good. I just wanted to comment, um when I was asked about the dog park, I was basing that information on the present. Presentation we gave on December ninth um to the capital improvement um group, and at that point. Um on the map that we showed, that it didn't say that the dog park was gonna move, so I just want to be clear that. I I know there's other things in the work, but I couldn't say definitively that it's going to be there. It's not gonna be there. I just knew that the app information I had at the time did not show it moving, right?
So Jonathan, I've got a quick question. Right now, what we do for the basic outer walkway is po- bark mulch in, correct?
I'm I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So right now, instead of the asphalt, there's actually just bark mulch that's around the outside edge so that they can walk on that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So is there any other questions for Jonathan? Matt?
And I I again, this is just sort of me thinking out loud, and I I don't know if John is uh proving this, but. Is there conceivably an ADA compliance issue with the fact that the Bark Park isn't wheelchair accessible? Uh cause I I did some very cursory research before the meeting and saw that dog parks are fall under that. Um I don't know if anyone. Obviously, that's not what this is for, but um I've just.
I'm not an expert on ADA compliance, um but from the little bit that I have researched in the past, I mean, being that it's sort of. Uh level terrain, um that issue may not be as, you know, uh significant as otherwise if. If we were sort of on a hill or some other, or there were steps or something uh that were involved. I mean, I I think it would enhance. Um those that, you know, need that ADA compliance, uh just because they would have a flatter surface. Uh a a a clear surface, uh whereas, you know, I think the chips are fine, but for some people, that might be hard if you're, you know, again, wheeling around. Uh you know, a stroller or something of that nature.
Yeah. Alright, well, I really want to support it, but unfortunately, it sounds like the Bark Park will be moving, so I I. Unfortunately, think I'll have to vote against it today, but I would love to see it happen in the future. Thank you.
Any other thoughts, Connor?
Thanks, Ralph. I would agree with a lot of the same sentiments, and I'd express the same one that the last time that we brought this up, just to make sure that we. Do this in the right order, and I think once we know the the final plan, even though construction may not happen necessarily immediately after. At least we'll know then whether we can make a solid decision. You know, once we get the plan back, if it isn't going to move, then we can take this up. Very shortly again, but if it if it does move, and I think it could probably be a much larger undertaking to revamp the dog park. So I suppose if it doesn't move, we could be revisiting this maybe in six months when we get the plan back, and if it is slated to move, then it might be a moot point.
So seeing no other hands up, um I would ask for a motion.
I motion to approve seventy five hundred dollars from Community Preservation Funds from the Open Space and Recreation Account. For the Bark Park Phase Two.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Mike?
So I just want to be clear, we're we're talking about, I mean, the census of the council here is, instead of spending these dollars today. Um they could be better used once the park is moved, correct? So we're motion- motioning in the affirmative, so I'm I'm voting no to allocate those funds at this point in time.
Okay, Marilyn?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Matt?
No.
Uh Connor?
No.
And I'm also a no. Um do we want to make Jonathan wait, or do we want to touch on the discussion real quick? I I would suggest we go right into this discussion, because I don't think this is gonna take very much. Um as you know, Jonathan, um. We were supposed to accept an application at a public hearing, and that's why I've changed this only to a discussion. Um it was brought to my attention on Saturday that uh you've received additional information. From Stuart Saginaw after your meeting and after your CPC committee had voted. And what I would be asking is if you would consider going back to your committee with that information. And having them take a look at the the application, just to make sure it still qualifies and just take a reaffirming vote before it comes back to us. If it comes back to us.
There was just, yeah, one um edit I should make. It did not come out of historical. It in fact came out of open space and recreation, so that would need to be. Amended on the application. Um there's also some discussion of just adding some language to our most recent, two most recent. Meeting minutes uh in April and May, so those things would need to be amended.
Okay, I mean, if if that's good with you, I think that takes care of it at this meeting. Um you can go back in front of the committee and. Um do what we need to and then bring it back to us if so be.
Okay.
Does any counselor have any questions regarding that? Okay, we're gonna move, uh we're actually gonna move back in order to the public hearing then. And it's a six thirty public hearing. Genie, do we have a legal notice to read in?
Yes, I believe you need to open the public hearing, though, with the time first, noting the time.
Okay, it is six forty two on Tuesday, August the ninth, twenty twenty two. Um I hereby open the public hearing with regards to Torito Mexican Restaurant, six twenty one North Main Street.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty eight of the general laws that Barrera Inc., DBA Torito Mexican Restaurant, six twenty one North Main Street. Has applied for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, change of ownership interest, and change of manager. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, August nine, twenty twenty two, at six thirty PM via Zoom webinar. For the council, Gina, probably town clerk.
Okay, thank you. Um at this time, I'm gonna introduce the counselors that are present, Marilyn Richards. Uh Matthew Boucher, Michael Kane, Kathleen Hill, Connor Roche, and myself, Ralph Page. Um Don, I would ask if um the attorney, uh Jeffrey Oppenheim is in the audience, and if we could bring him in.
Yes, sir, he's on his way.
Great. Yes, we can. Now you've muted.
And ask Ralph if he's got uh video.
Do you have any video, Jeffrey?
There he is.
Hey, there you are.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're we're, Mr. Chairman, uh we are experiencing some uh heavy thunderstorms down here, and we. Hope we don't lose power. Uh but um uh we're we're very pleased to uh be here this evening. Um I'd like to uh. See if I can position this in such a way, yeah, my client Jorge uh is seated behind me. I represent Barrera Inc. Um and our offices are in Falmouth, Mass. Uh greetings from Cape Cod this evening. Um we have uh. Uh there's several people that I'd like to to uh introduce, although they're not in the room, uh only two of them are. Uh but I'd like to go through uh who our principals are. Uh Maria Elena Delgado, who is the uh. Proposed new president and director. Jorge Ramos, who is with me, behind me, over my shoulder. He is a treasurer and director. Uh Juan Carlos Jimenez is the secretary and director. He's working this evening, as is uh Sakashi Jimenez. Was a shareholder. With me uh is Luis Alfredo Pelayo Cervantes. Uh who is our proposed manager. He's also a shareholder. I'm gonna turn, so there is Luis. Okay, um and he is with his his wife all the way over here. So uh. Just very quickly, um a little bit to of a review of the procedural history. Um we were first before you in February two thousand and twenty for a quest for a transfer of the liquor license. Held by our landlord. Uh you approved the transfer at that time, but subject to the approval of the planning board. For a special permit. And um it took us a while to get that special permit, uh in part because uh the restaurant industry and and. Uh I guess the world um uh was dealing with um a pandemic. So we had a second public hearing before you uh in um March of two thousand and twenty one. And that focused on a two thousand eighteen agreement between the former owner and the town on the use of the deck. That restaurant. And the council cleared that up during that meeting, and we went back to the um. Planning board and got a uh special permit uh on um. March sixteenth of two thousand twenty one. We opened for business uh in May of this year, after doing renovations and things have been running smoothly. And successfully for us in your community, and we're very happy to be there. This evening, we are specifically requesting a change in officers, directors. Uh the removal of Miguel, uh no, yes, the removal of Miguel Ramos as president and replacing him with his wife. Maria Elena Delgado. Removing Ramon Michelle and his son, Ramon Michelle Junior as directors. And um they will be replaced by Elena and Juan Carlos as directors. Luis will also be replacing Ramon Michelle, Luis, who is here with me this evening. And that uh his position, if approved by you, will be as the liquor license manager. Um so along with the change in officers and directors, uh we are proposing a change of shareholders in Barrera Inc. And we're requesting permission to have six shareholders, four of whom will be um will hold twenty percent. Interest and two will hold ten percent interest, and that is all specified in our application, which. Um uh the board, uh the council should have, um uh because I know Gene did receive it. So with the passage of time, um between when we started this process and we got open, um there's. Been the need to change some of our shareholders and some of our directors and our liquor license manager. Um and you know, that's really uh the knob of why we're before you this evening. And as you're all aware, that we need your approval uh as a first step to go on to the A B C C. Um for their approval. So quickly, some background on 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 the people that I have put on our A B C C application. First, Maria Elena. First, Maria Elena Delgado. So along with her husband, Miguel Ramos, they have an interest in 12 Mexican restaurants spread from Ulster, New York, through Connecticut and into Massachusetts. We have been expanding successfully over the last four or five years. Now Elena and her husband have been working in the restaurant industry since 1995. So they have, you know, 27 years each under their belt. Jorge, who's sitting with me, is Miguel's brother and business partner, and he has had 17 years of experience in the restaurant business. He's a lead partner in developing new restaurants. He lives in Grafton, Mass. with his wife and son. I've represented Miguel and Jorge since the spring of 2015, when they were permitting a restaurant here in Falmouth. And these gentlemen have acquired 10-plus restaurants in the last seven years. Now Juan Carlos Jimenez, or I'll refer to him as Carlos, has 16 years plus experience working in the restaurant business for his parents. He started out as a dishwasher and rose to bartending and then into management and now is seeking an ownership interest in Barrera Inc. He has been in a general management position for the last seven years at Cancun's Mexican Restaurant in Grafton, Mass. However, he has had six-month stints at new locations when those locations have opened up in order to establish these restaurants in the new communities. He also lives in Grafton with his family. Sakachi Jimenez has been working in restaurants since she's 17 years old. She's now 36. And most of her work has been in Mexican restaurants. She's serving alcohol to customers since she's 19. She's of course tips trained. And she is really familiar with all aspects of the restaurant, which is owned by her husband's cousin in Grafton, which you may be familiar with, Cuatro Amigos. She alternates between bartending and food and alcohol service. Now Luis, who's with me this evening, started with Miguel and Jorge at their Grafton location as a dishwasher. He held that position for three years before moving into the kitchen. He then worked as a cook at the North Borough Restaurant for two years before becoming a server. He currently works for Barrera in East Long Meadow as the chef and hopefully soon as the manager of the liquor license. Luis is a serve safe, serve safe, excuse me, certified and tips trained. And he's been serving alcohol since he was 19 years old. He's married to Anna, who is with him, and they have a child. The corporation considers him an excellent choice to become the liquor license manager because he's very responsible and hard worker and very reliable. And of course, very experienced. Now, last but not least is Oscar Reyes Fivaro. And he's been with Miguel and Jorge since 2015. He has worked in the North Borough Restaurant. He started as a busboy and then moved to the kitchen and after, you know, working as a barback and a bartender, transitioned to becoming a server and assistant manager. His whole family is working at North Borough. Oscar's sister has been a server there since they first opened and his brother works in the kitchen. He's very responsible and never late and extremely friendly. And he will be receiving a 10% interest as a shareholder if you approve of us this evening. Now, as you can probably tell from my description, all of these folks started at the bottom and learned the restaurant business from the bottom up. They're all very hardworking. I feel fortunate to have them as clients. And I hope you agree with me that Long, East Long Meadow is fortunate to have them as a business entity in their community. We're not changing anything else about our permit as far as, you know, the layout of the restaurant, the menu, the hours of operation, the sale of alcoholic beverage. All of that is the same. It's all about the change in leadership, the change in stock ownership and agreeing that Luis Cervantes would make a fine manager of our liquor license. So before I sum up, I would like to thank and commend to the board the work of Jean Quiglietti. You know, this, this representing Barrera Inc. is my first outing in front of any board in East Long Meadow. And Jean has been very helpful and I want to thank her publicly and commend her to you. It's the conclusion of my presentation. We're here. We're happy to try to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. So the way I'm going to do this is I'm first going to ask any counselors if they have any questions. Then I'll go on and I'll open up to the public comment section and then we'll bring it back to the counselors. So at this time, is there any counselor with any questions with regards to the information that we've received? Mike?
I would just like to state that I agree with what Jeffrey brought forward, that there seems to be a great foundation there. People that start at the bottom and work their way up certainly have a better understanding of these businesses and seem to make very good managers going forward. So I'm happy that they've created a succession plan throughout their businesses and wish them luck moving forward.
Thank you. Any other counselors? So Jeffrey, I do have a question with regards to liquor license manager. So when you say that, that's an onsite manager, correct?
Correct. That's a 40-hour a week position within the corporation.
Okay, and so obviously the restaurants open longer than 40 hours. Does that person have to be available if something happens, but when they're not on duty?
Yeah. Chairman, you know, 40 hours is probably the minimum. He'll be onsite. Appreciating how hard these folks work. And you know, when he is not on location, there'll be someone like an assistant manager essentially who will take over those responsibilities, either during a normal work week or I hope we can get him to take vacation occasionally with his family.
Jeannie?
So the renewal packets that go out for the liquor licensees, one of the forms that they have to complete and return to us is a substitute manager form. And it names a substitute manager that should be available when the named manager isn't. It's not a state requirement. It's something the town's required for years. So that's always on record also.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
Certainly name someone, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any counselor questions? Okay, at this time then, I would open it up. It's a public hearing, so I will open it up to the public. If you have any questions, if you could please raise your hand and Don, bring you in.
I don't see any hands.
Neither do I, Don. So at this time, we bring it back to the board. Are there any closing thoughts, any closing comments? Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion from someone to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public. I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second, Mike?
Take the second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to close this public hearing. I will do a roll call vote. Let me look at my list. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. And then I would entertain a motion. If someone would like to step up and, and take the motion to approve the change of officers.
I move to approve a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, change of ownership interest and change of manager for Barrera Inc. doing business as Torito Mexican Restaurant, 621 North Main Street.
I'll second the motion.
Having a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Thank you very much. Congratulations. I've been to the restaurant. It is wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Public hearing. Financial, so we are on a proven increase of 150,000 to the town manager's budget. So before I entertain a motion to do that, I would just like to say that our finance committee had made a recommendation that we have what I'm going to call a deputy town manager, someone that can do, you know, grant writing, take on projects, do whatever our town manager requires. At the time, Mary had thought that maybe we should wait on this and so it didn't make it into the budget. I've since talked to her and she's made a request. We're not sure what the position's going to pay, so I came up with a number. I thought this would be plenty sufficient with any other amounts that we may need. And that's how this got on our agenda. So is there any thoughts before we go on with motion on it? Mike?
I would just like to add, the number seems to make sense and if all those funds aren't exhausted, that those funds can be turned back, correct?
Absolutely. Connor?
Thank you, Ralph. I think overall, I mean, in spirit, I agree with the, the position, especially since it was something that existed a couple of years prior. And I, I agree with the need for it. I think the only potential hangup that I'm still struggling with personally is the wrench that it could throw into the replacement town manager search and how we handle that as a council. Only because it could kind of set the tone that whoever's the deputy town manager would then potentially have an interest in becoming the full-time town manager of East Long Meadow and that I think could complicate matters if we move forward with that before we resolve the permanent town manager position.
Okay, anyone else have any thoughts? Matt?
I agree with Connor's comments. I'm a bit worried about this as the town manager position is in flux. I think it's, well, I guess actually before I go into my comments, where is the money coming from?
So under our motion, what we would be looking for is once free cash is certified, that that's where the money would be coming from.
Okay, okay.
But it won't, it won't be able to be moved from free cash until free cash is certified because as Steve has told us, it's pretty much frozen right now. So this is something, and I believe, what is it, September that we're looking at, that maybe end of September or something for free cash certification? What's your hopes?
My hope would be today, but the reality is that the audit's getting, it'll come out on the report, the audit's scheduled for late August. Then it's a matter of when we get it back, this information back from the auditors. And as the state, we're working on the state forms right now as best we can, but if there are any changes, obviously, we'd have to adapt to that. And then they would, the state's currently doing a prioritization based on if you have a meeting coming up to vote and you have a need for the free cash, they'll try to bump it to the front of the line. So September, October, I'm hoping for realistically, that would be more towards October, I think, if I had to guess.
Okay. Marilyn, I had seen your hand up.
Thank you, Ralph. As far as a deputy town manager position, I sat in the finance committee meeting when there was about eliminating it during this last budget process. And there was great encouragement to reconsider because the value of that position was recognized by our financial oversight committee. We all recognized the importance of what that position brought to the town manager's office. I don't see any problem with putting a person in place if and when the town manager leaves and we have a new town manager. It's like any other position, any other department head, any other member within the office, they're all there hired to do a job and we all worked together. And hopefully, whomever the new town manager will be in the future, so I see no problem with making that change now because the need is there. The need is there. Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Matt?
So I suppose, I guess, as I stated, I'm uncomfortable with this just due to the town manager position being in flux right now. And I would probably be more comfortable discussing this later in the meeting after the town manager search update. As I believe the timeline of the town manager search kind of changes the bringing on a employee as deputy town manager. I suppose I'd look for input on that and otherwise I may make a relevant motion to move this to later in the meeting.
Does anyone have any any thoughts as far as moving this till later in the meeting and bringing it back? I, I personally don't have an issue with it.
I'm okay with moving it later.
Matt, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss financial matter D9B2 approving an increase of $150,000 to the town manager's budget to after the new business item D3, the town manager search update.
I will second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. I'm a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Finance Director. Steve, you have a report for us.
I do, Counselor. I want to say congratulations to you and Counselor Richards first for your new positions on the council, if you will. The FY 22 year-end process, as Mary alluded to, went smoothly. We were able to close it before the workday started at eight. I'd like to have a special shout out. Congratulations. Thank you to both Mary Race from the IT Department and Ogabones, Assistant Town Accountant, who put in extra effort to make sure that was done. So there was little to no disruption to the town function during the workday. As well as to the rest of my staff, Patty, Wendell, and Terry, Jared Smith, who frankly just retired. So she's, she took her, she took it a lot. So we wish her a long and happy retirement. And Karen Corpin, who also helped out too. The part of the closing, part of the year-end stuff rather, I'm sorry, is the annual audit. The annual audit, as we say, is scheduled to start at the end of August, I believe around August 20. I guess, uh, I believe around August twenty-second. Uh, it's gonna be the full audit, annual audit, as well as singleize for the um cares and ARPA monies that are required by the federal government now. Uh, we're hoping to get that done quickly. Uh, honestly, getting it started earlier is what will lead us to getting to the certification of free cash quicker. And so that's what we're hoping for. As part of that, um, an aspect of the free cash is the turnbacks. I'd like to echo Mary in thanking every, all the department heads for their hard work, especially in this inflationary time, uh that kind of guides midway and how things are going. As of uh the close, we are expecting turnbacks of roughly two million. These numbers are far from final, uh, and I'll give you an update as audit adjustments may not come in. But it's an impressive number considering what we're going through in an economy today. The um the other thing I have coming up for you tonight, uh, bills of a prior year, these will all be paid out of this year's budget. They're relatively minor in dollar amount. Uh, there's eighty-nine dollars from Verizon. There were some issues with Verizon billing, and it took them this long to kind of get it worked out. They were discovered during reconciliation that they were doing between the town and Verizon. Crystal Rock Water, uh, it's fifteen eighty-six to be precise. It was the last, it was the June bill, and it wasn't received before the PO was closed out. And so we we closed the PO too early, basically. Uh, the cabinet and the last is cabin insurance, it's a thousand dollar deductible for an injury on duty for one of our police officers. And we didn't receive the bill until July, and again, there was no encumbered for it, so we we didn't have any encumbered. We need to take it as billed prior year. Also, we have a couple of grants coming up. One is the municipal small bridge from Mass DOT for five hundred thousand. Uh, it's just with the cost of phase two of the Porter Ridge, Porter Road Bridge, rather, sorry. And it is a reimbursable grant. You're gonna be voting on the acceptance of it. And then as costs are incurred, we submit to the state, the state will reimburse us up to the five hundred thousand. And the other grant is a farm credit east, uh, farmer's market grant, uh, five hundred dollars towards that. And then finally, the East Mar- East Long Meadow Marlins Swim Team has a gift account that they use for fundraising uh that the parents have done to avoid increasing the cost of the fees, the registration fees. And so as a result, they would like to move this to the, from the town to the East Long Meadow Foundation. And have it all the upcoming fundraising fees go there instead of going to registration. The registration fees stay in the re- we are recreation revolving fund. This is just for things above and beyond. And as the, the August fourth, the balance was thirty-five thirty-two point eighty-two.
Perfect.
In a nutshell.
Nothing to it. Everything's easy, Steve.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure you have a question or two, counselor.
Not actually, but I would open it up to our other counselors. Does anyone have any uh uh questions for our finance director? Connor?
Not a question, but I just wanted to say thank you for preparing all that information, and likewise to the other town departments. I'm sure especially DPW when it comes to that large grant for the bridge. Good work to everyone for making all of that happen.
Thank, absolutely. So with that, we will move on to um approval of prior year's bills. Do we have a uh motion? What is it? Nine B three A?
Um, I'll motion to approve a total of eleven hundred and four dollars and ninety-one cents for prior year's bills as presented.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm a yes. Marilyn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And Connor?
Yes.
Okay, um, moving on, our next motion would be for the small bridge. Um, I do believe Bruce is in the audience if anyone has any questions with regards to that. Um
All right. I move to approve the municipal small bridge program grant of five hundred thousand dollars per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, and further to appropriate the grant amount of five hundred thousand dollars to be placed into a designated fund by borrowing or otherwise for the construction, reconstruction, and/or maintenance with regards to the municipal small bridge, bridge program in East Long Meadow to be expended under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works and said some to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you, Bruce. Um, with that, we'll do a roll call vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay. Moving on, could we have a motion for the farm credit east farmer's market grant?
I motion to approve farm credit east farmer's market grant of five hundred dollars per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, um, do I have a motion for the Marlins Town Gift Account?
I move to transfer three thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cents from the Marlins Town Gift Account to the East Long Meadow Foundation, Inc.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Um, I'd just like to make a point. Um, the eighty-two cents, is that point eight-two, or is it supposed to be point nine-two?
I see eight-two. Point eight-two.
So I'm I'm just clarifying, I have multiple documents here. The eight-two is the correct number, correct? Okay.
And that's what the motion was, correct? Three thousand five?
Yes, it was.
Dollars and eight-two cents. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, roll call vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, there is no old business. Under new business, we have a discussion of the fuel efficient uh policy, and if we could bring in uh Bailey Mitchell, that would be awesome.
He's on his way.
Thank you.
Oh, there I am. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Bailey.
So Bailey, you want to give us an overview?
Yeah, so the um fuel efficient vehicle um policy is a part of the green communities designation process through the state. Um, and it's been um brought to my attention that the uh document has a couple of errors in it, so just so everyone is aware, um, the Board of Selectmen is mentioned twice in the, in the document, but that has been corrected, so um but with that, uh, it's pretty straightforward. The uh requirements of the green communities um program states that we have to uh adopt this policy um in order to be eligible for the green communities um funding that is available. Um, I'm not extremely familiar. I don't have the the uh information about the grant process, uh, but that will become after we get the designation, and our application is going to be um compiled with um all of the other criteria that uh we have um almost met so far um with PVPC, and they will submit that uh at the end of September, so we're hoping to um get the fuel efficient vehicle policy passed by the town council, and then it has to be passed by the school board as well.
Okay, counselors have any questions? Connor?
Thanks, Ralph. Uh, just the few things that I noticed made first, I think it's a good idea, and it advances, you know, one of the themes of the, the master plan that we had recently completed. And it was good that there were already the corrections to referencing the town council. I wondered under the, the last page where it says like the policies enforced by the Chief Administrative Officer or designate. Is it clear enough that Chief Administrative Officer probably in our case refers to town manager, or should we substitute the word town manager in that instance? And then the only other two points that I would make, one, you, you did bring up that the school committee and superintendent would have to prove it on their side as well. Uh, the only other thing in the the state's notes about um the green communities with fuel efficient vehicles is that we may have been used to recycling vehicles in town between departments as they've aged out of their useful full-time lifespan, but we may not be able to do that going forward. So for example, in the past, if we had a police cruiser, which currently based off of the ones that we've been purchasing would be exempt and not meet the mile per gallon criteria. Once we no longer use that for the police department, you couldn't turn around and use that for another town department, because it must meet the current guidelines as of the time that you're making that change in the future. In addition, so if there was also a fuel efficient vehicle that we purchased today, but say five or seven years from now, those guidelines get upped, and the mile per gallon, you know, criteria gets even higher. The vehicle that was, you know, permissible today may not be permissible seven years from now to transfer between departments. Not necessarily a big deal, but just something we have to keep in mind that we can't move them around. You either have to exhaust their entire useful lifespan or dispose of them somehow. But that's all that I noticed. Thank you.
Any other counselors? So we had put this under a discussion. Bailey, do we already have a list of all the different vehicles that fall under this? And is that something that I can see a copy of?
Uh, yes.
I'm just curious how many vehicles this affects within our town and where they stand. How many miles per gallon and all are they getting now? And is this a fleet that we're gonna have to replace most of it in the next couple of years, once we become a green community?
Yeah, so I can send out the, the inventory. Um I don't have it pulled up in front of me. Unfortunately, my remote connection's not working on my computer. Um so I can send that out to the council if uh, you know, you all would prefer to vote at the next meeting. I think that that's uh, we still have enough time for that, so um, I can definitely send that and uh you know, any information I can um that may make it easier for you.
That would be great. Um Matt, I saw your hand go up.
Um, so I guess my, one of my questions is who determines the miles per gallon requirements? Like, what's the process for that?
Um, the requirements would be for the green communities uh designation and the grant itself would be, all of that would be determined at the state, I believe. Um, the miles per gallon calculations in terms of um what vehicles would be eligible for those are calculated by the EPA.
I, I suppose I'm, and this is just a broader discussion point, and aspirationally, I agree with all of this. I think it would save the town money, obviously fulfills environmental stewardship goals. I, I am concerned about outsourcing our decision-making on what vehicles we use in town to Boston is where I'm having a tough time with this. Um, and it's, it's not so much the issue of, you know, if we know that for, say, X, Y, Z, you know, ten years, it's gonna be um, what is it, uh, is it forty-three to fifty-seven miles per gallon? I, I don't have the numbers. If we can do it as a set number. But I, I worry that, you know, we could buy, you know, we could find that the requirements change with the political headwinds or tailwinds, so to speak, um on Beacon Hill, and that's where I'm having a tough time with it. Unless there's a set. It, maybe you have this information on you, maybe you don't. If there's a set amount of time that we know um whatever the miles per gallon determinant is okay for. Or could we wake up, you know, after next legislative session and see, oh, well, the uh it's been determined that we, none of our, you know, that they, we need electric vehicles or what have you.
Connor?
Thanks, Ralph. Um, of course, it's all subject to change at any moment, but the last time the state updated their guidance was August of twenty eighteen, and that, that time they were still using twenty-ten EPA data with miles per gallon ranges, so it doesn't seem like they're changing it too frequently. But of course, it doesn't mean that they're not gonna change it six months from now.
That's good to know.
Yeah, and I would just note that um as far as I'm aware, the policy would also allow um some vehicles to be recycled across departments um uh so long as they are uh better fuel mileage than the current vehicle that it would be replacing, if that makes sense. So we, we wouldn't be able to recycle it to another department um without taking into account the fuel mileage now. But it still can be done.
So I have a question, and I'm not sure for who. Um, if we agree to a policy, can we at any time decide that no longer works for us and decide not to do that policy? Um, or do we get, because we uh advance into the green community and we've taken a grant or something, do we get punished for that? Any thoughts? Mary?
And, you know, we may have to re- repay a grant if we qualify for one, but that's the whole point of the green community status, because it opens up the door for funding opportunities that we're not eligible for now, so. Uh, and there's also the commercially practicable uh guidance in this document, so that you know, we're not gonna have to replace all the vehicles all at once. It's, it's only if it's fiscally practicable. Um, so I think there are some, some wiggle, there is some wiggle room in it. Um, but to your specific question, I don't know without doing the research, uh, counselor, but I suspect that if we are found to be in non-compliance and we've accepted some funds, that we may well have to reimburse the Commonwealth for those.
Matt?
Is a school bus a heavy-duty vehicle?
Um, so as far as I know, right now, there are technically um school buses that are uh you know, fuel efficient, but as far as I know, um, our school district with the current contracts, um, those hour buses wouldn't fall under this uh policy, so.
Okay, that's good to know. That's where I was going with this. Okay, thank you.
So Bailey, did I read this correct? Basically, any vehicle that's over eight thousand five hundred pounds GVW is considered a heavy-duty vehicle?
Yeah, so that would be exempt.
So school buses have to have a GVW over eight thousand five hundred. Um, I would assume almost probably most of the vehicles in our DPW, I mean, even pickup trucks now are ten and twelve thousand GVW.
Yeah, and that is shown in the inventory that we um, that we completed as well, so I can send that out.
Any other questions? So what my thought was is for us to get this information, put it on this agenda for September, and come back at that point in time to vote on it. Okay with the rest of the committee?
Yep.
Works for me.
So that's what we're gonna be looking at doing, Bailey.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the presentation.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for the info.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeannie, do you want to explain a little bit on the next one?
Sure. So I did give you some background as a supporting document, but for the public, um, recently, Chapter ninety-two of the Acts of twenty-twenty-two was signed by the governor, also known as the Votes Act, and there's many components to this act, um, two of the major one. And there's many components to this act. Two of the major ones are that for every presidential primary, state primary and state election. Mail in voting is permanent. And early in person voting is required. And like I said, there's other components to this. The one that caught my eye was that. There is the. The police, the the chief of police was responsible for assigning detail to elections. And in a way, that's true. I communicate with many departments in preparation for elections. One of the key communications is with the police department. And I will request through the police chief. Detail for the election, but it could change. If we expect a heavy turnout, I might require more police. If there's school in session, I may need more police and so on. So it is the responsibility of the police chief, but. It's through the direction of the clerk's office. So many clerks are doing this across the state. They're having their board of selectmen, town council, city council. Vote to basically have that remain the same. So the motion before you refers to the original Mass General law. And you can see the tail end. It says move to designate the police chief to remain the authority to assign police officers for every election under the advisement of the town clerk. I reached out to Chief Williams. Just as a courtesy to make sure he knew about this and he knew all about it through the Mass Chiefs Association. And he saw the motion and supporting document and was okay with it. I also ran it by. Town manager Mary McNally and she felt the council had the authority to make this change. To the Votes Act, so that the responsibility would be the same. It'll be the police chief, but through the direction of the clerk's office. And it's worked out well, so.
Great, thank you.
And I believe Mark's in the audience. I don't know if he wants to add anymore. I can say that. Raised a lot of eyebrows in the clerk world. And there were a lot of questions asked and I haven't seen really an explanation of the logic behind it. And like I said, enough Mark found out anything through his communication with the Chiefs Association, if he wants to offer. If not, that's fine.
If you would like to come into the meeting and offer input, that would be great.
I'm waiting to see his hand. I guess that's a sign, right? Right, Mark, you're a good guy.
Good evening, counselors. All all I will say is. Jeannie presented it very well and I couldn't have said any of it better myself. I have my own thoughts as to the logic behind it, but. I I don't know and I'd be happy to share those privately, but because I really don't know, but. I would I would respectfully ask that you consider this motion and. Keep the system as is. I think it works well here and in many other towns and cities in the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. So does the council have any questions for Jeannie or Mark? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion then.
I move to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one. At the polling location at every election therein to preserve order and to protect the election officers. And supervisors from any interference with their duties. And to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by section seventy two. Of M G L, chapter fifty four, which was changed in section thirteen of chapter ninety two. Of the Acts of twenty twenty two. Further, move to designate the police chief to remain the authority to assign police officers for every election. Under the advisement of the town clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Jeannie?
I just wanted to add that not only do the police assist a great deal with this, but they also. Mark also assigns police to meet me here at town hall to escort the voting machines and ballots to the polls. And at the end of night, they squared it back, so there there's more to it than that. It's not included in this vote or the M G L, but. They play a good. A good role in this whole system, in case anybody doesn't realize how involved it is. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will call a vote. I am a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And Matt?
Yes.
Okay. So our next item of business is a town manager search update. So last. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, I believe it was last Monday. I had a meeting with Mary McNally in her office. And we talked about town manager, we talked about search and. I once again threw out there as I tried to every single time I ever saw her was if she would consider. Staying on for an additional year. And to my surprise. She said, yes, she would, if we would like to extend her contract for a year, if the board voted that way, that she would stay on for an additional year. I I was thrilled. I thought I was going to fall over. Matter of fact, I think I asked her a second time, did I hear you correctly? And. I would like to see, and again, this is only my personal opinion. With the the tough times that we've had with the search and all, for us to extend Mary's contract for an additional year. And what I was hoping to get tonight is an authorization from the board. To be able to sign the contract extension. But I wanted to bring it out there to everyone, see what your thoughts were. Hear your concerns, if there is any, hear your cheers, whatever, whatever you choose. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to the council. Is there anyone that has any thoughts or? Or questions or anything else? Connor?
Thanks, Ralph. I first want to. Start by saying, of course, I have always appreciated Mary's hard work to the the town and I no doubt. Think that she would continue to do good work over the next year if we do extend it, but. I think it just goes back to the same concerns that I had last time when we extended it that. We're only prolonging the issue of. Resolving the permanent town manager position. And last time, I think there was the argument to be made. On the other side to say that it was providing stability for the town, especially the town employees and department heads. To not have to appoint an interim. Person, but I feel we're almost at the tipping point now. Especially with some town employees. That. We're kind of going in the opposite direction that now there's a little less stability because the situation has been unknown. Pretty soon going on a year and we're just going to keep kicking that can. Down the road and I personally feel we need to. Bring it to a close sooner than later. And so although I I'm not in favor of extending. The contract further. Certainly not because of. Performance at all. The performance has been great, but I. I would hope that if the the rest of the council. Does vote in the affirmative to extend the contract that we don't. Take advantage of the full year and we try to continue. Resolving the town manager position sooner than later.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts? Marilyn?
Thank you, Ralph. I'm certainly in favor. Of welcoming Mary to stay. For another year. There are many major issues underway. And it just makes good sense as long as she's willing. If we hadn't had this little bit of interruption in her service. And we just gave her another year, there would, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Mary has done amazing things for the town, the town department heads. As far as I know, I hear amazing things and they would be thrilled for Mary to stay. For another year. And so that would be my preference. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Matt?
My primary concern and I I'd like to echo a lot of Counselor O'Shea's comments. Is. Is this back to business as usual, or are we continuing this state of, and this isn't a comment on. Mary's performance or. You know, meant to. Be related to that anyway, but is it extending this feeling of, I think there's a feeling among certainly myself. I'm sure among town employees and even residents, this feeling of paralysis on a municipal level. Of kind of waiting. Or trying to get to that next person. And so are we waiting out? Waiting for the the pool to change for town manager applicants? Or are we, is this a, is? The goal for Mary to stay the full year, or are we seeking to say if the. Winds change in three or four months, begin the search for a new town manager yet again? Does that, does that make sense?
Anyone want to chime in? Kathy?
This is how I would interpret that to my co counselors here, colleague counselors. That. Should we extend the contract for one full year? That doesn't mean we just put the file back in the file cabinet and. Put our feet up. I think at some reasonable time, we should continue a search. And do it with enough breathing room. It's not unusual in the business world. And in the education world to go out and search when it's known that I'll use the school department because that's. An industry I'm most familiar with. When it's known that a superintendent has tendered a resignation. Oftentimes, and you see this especially at the higher education level with colleges. They'll tender their resignation effective within like a year down the road. And so it gives the. The body enough time to conduct a search without rushing. And. You know, settle on what they feel is a good candidate with a starting date of, in our case. July one of twenty twenty three, so. How I'm looking at that is if we go forward tonight and authorize. The president to negotiate an extension of up to a year for Mary. At some point. In a few months, we ought to think about re engaging the search. And being able to publish in the in the job profile that the position. The successful candidate would start his or her assignment on July first of twenty twenty three. Or August first, whatever, but we'll have enough time. Versus we wait until April and we hop in the deep end. And then we're faced with a successful candidate. Needing to vacate his or her position. Or give a a three month notice and we're always, you know, we don't need to be behind the eight ball. I look at this year as exceptional good news on the part of. The town. Having the benefit of Mary's. Expertise and leadership. I'm pleased with that news. But I I think it's it's an opportunity for the council to. Use the upcoming twelve months appropriately and start a search. Sooner than later.
Mike, you have any thoughts?
I would just add because I did have conversations with the Collins Center. And they are standing by. They feel that they're here to support us in whatever direction this council chooses to go. And this certainly buys us time to answer. Many questions that will derive from. Screening committees, do we use the Collins Center? The biggest change that I see that's happened over the years, and that's from being here from day one, is that we have an H R department now. So this time we'll be able to take advantage of the skill set that that department brings. So. I look at is we're stabilized. And we can move at the pace we want to move. The Collins Center did. Talk when I was speaking with them last week, say, this is not the time to be looking for a manager over the summer, as we all know, people are. Taking time off and vacationing. Creating a little bit more distance. The pool of applicants can change, so. Me, how do I feel? It's stabilization. And we know that we'll have, you know, we can create a plan together on how do we move forward? Do we move forward with the Collins Center without them? How much involvement does H R bring into the equation? What do we do with the screening committee? So it gives us time to digest all of that.
Okay, so my two cents is I think this takes a lot of immediate pressure off of the council. We all know that we have been out looking. We've offered a one year contract and I don't see a difference between offering a one year contract to someone we don't know. To offering it to someone we know that's done a phenomenal job. I obviously, she's agreed to one year, which takes the pressure off instead of every forty five days. Not knowing, you know, what the next forty five is going to be and. I I don't like going down that road. I like to know that there's stability. I like to know that going forwards, we can open up. A search. We can take our time with it, making sure that hopefully the pool of candidates. Is something to our liking and that we can go on from there. I I see this as a huge win for our town. And I am thrilled that Mary offered it. So. I think this. This will go right into the next portion. You know, where we've asked for additional funding for a deputy town manager. Also, Mary, go ahead.
Well, thank you. I was just going to say it's a two part issue. My continuing for. Up to a year is contingent, completely contingent on that funding for a deputy town manager. And I wanted to make that clear. That was my intention all along. For what it's worth. I don't want one vote to extend my contract and then not have the other motion pass because that's. That's a prerequisite from my point of view.
Okay, one of the other things I talked about with Mary that I will put out there is. A two percent pay increase. I think if she stays on for the year. A two percent increase is basically consistent with all of our other contracts and. I can't see not giving her a pay raise. Do we have any other thoughts, questions, concerns? So I think we still need to take this as two separate, Matt?
Yeah, so I. Just gonna, before we vote, clarify. How I feel and I'm going to vote the way I will. I'm not opposed to. Keeping Mary on, but I suppose I'm opposed to the general spirit of delaying the town manager search. A year in kind of keeping states. So I'm going to abstain. I'm not voting against Mary. I'm not voting against keeping on it. I won't vote against the. Deputy town manager, but I will be abstaining on both votes.
Okay, any other counselors? So I would be looking for a motion to give me the authority to sign your contract extension. With the agreement that it would include a two percent pay increase. Is there any comments with regards to that, Kathy?
I was ready to make a motion, that's all. I can wrap it into the motion if you'd like.
I saw Mike's hand go up, so. Mike, what's your thought?
Unless I heard this wrong, I I think that we would need to approve the funding first because if the funding there isn't there for the deputy town manager. I think Mary might be rescinding on wanting to stay here for a year.
That's true.
So I would I would go back to that now that now that we have direction here. We know we have a manager that's willing to stay a year contingent upon having a deputy town manager. But without the manager. Deputy, so. That motion was was up, was that, was that, was there a motion made for that hundred and fifty thousand and seconded? Yes. So we kind of.
The motion was not made to. The motion was not made to for the, the other position?
For the 150?
No, we didn't get that far.
Okay.
We were in the middle of discussion and it was recommended. We, we agreed to move, set that aside and move first to the update and then come back. So we don't have a, the actual motion itself on the floor.
So my, my suggestion was, as I stated, that I think that business needs to be dealt with first before we know if we have a manager that's willing to stay for a year.
So with everything being discussed, are we, are we okay with taking the motion now to take a vote on the increase of 150,000 to the town manager's budget? And then going right into the town manager?
The only recommendation I could make, if you want to address the issue on the floor right now, and that is to authorize you, it could be contingent upon acceptance of the motion. So we, we could do it that way, or we need to back up and have a motion presented for the transfer of 150,000. And that's up to you or
You were about to make a motion before I had interrupted. Could you include that it's contingent upon the approval of the prior?
Sure. Let me think of the words as we go here. I move to authorize Council President Ralph Page to negotiate a, up to a one year contract with town manager Mary McNally. That would include a 2% salary increase and that this authorization is continuing, is contingent upon the successful appropriation of funds this evening to hire a deputy town manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
I, I would just clarify that transferring the funds doesn't mean Mary has to hire a deputy town manager. That lies within her purview. It just kind of backs up, in my opinion, to what the Budget Finance Committee did a year ago. The funds are there, but it's her job on if she chooses to hire or not and what she decides to call that position.
Okay, any other discussion? Hey, here, Matt?
I'd just like to thank everyone for supporting my motion earlier to move the discussion around. I thought this was a productive discussion and kind of provided some insight on why we were appropriating the money. So I just wanted to thank the council for that.
Thank you. So I will move to a vote. I am a yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Matt?
I abstain.
Connor?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. We will move into the next discussion, the next vote then. Actually, is there actually? Did we wrap those two together?
No, I, no, I think the motion said contingent upon a successful vote.
Correct. So at this time, we will go back to, what is it, B2? Under matters?
B2.
And we will go back to our discussion with regards to allocation upon free cash certification of 150,000 being added to the town manager's budget. Any thoughts on it? Any further discussion? Connor?
Thank you, Ralph. I think the only final point I would make is that while I agree that both the town manager and a deputy town manager position are important, it is kind of interesting to me that we'd be willing to re-increase the budget to the town manager department to 150,000. But we may have had even better successful town manager searches. Have we just raised the salary to what we're now trying to split between two positions? If we just incorporated that into a single position, our pool may have been much wider and different than what we've experienced.
So the only comment I would make to that would be with this, we have two people. We know from myself being on the charter commission right from day one, we knew how much we were putting onto the town manager. And truthfully, we never expected the town manager to try and do all of it. We expected the town manager to have a, a secondary person to be able to put a lot of this on to. I, I'm, I'm mind blown that we've gone through almost six years without one. And that, that's my thought. Kathy, I saw your hand going up.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Ralph. Just for clarification for the public listening in. I have served on the finance subcommittee for six years. In this last budget preparation, the finance subcommittee strongly recommended the inclusion of funds to support a deputy town manager position, or however it should be named. Our predicament was that that Mary had submitted already a budget to us that did not include those funds. And we, as a council, have no authority by mass law to increase a recommended manager's budget. We always have authority to decrease, but we cannot recommend to increase. And so we were somewhat in a catch 22 there. And that was one of the reasons why when the budget got passed at our May 20, whatever meeting, the end of the month, it did not include funds to do what we're trying to do tonight. But that I don't want anyone to think that, that the spirit of recognizing the need and the for this kind of a position or the desire to have one wasn't there.
Thank you. Mike, did you have a comment? I thought I saw you before.
No, I think, I, I think it was, it was just helpful to share the conversation that I had with the Collins Center. And by no form or fashion, are we looking to delay this process. It just creates, in my opinion, stabilization right now. And then this council can methodically decide the direction that we want to take moving forward with a search to replace somewhere between, I want to say, this contract is, is up to one year. So based on everything that's taken place, we'll, you know, we'll be in a, a position to hopefully have direction moving forward.
Okay, I would ask for a motion then.
I move to approve an increase of $150,000 to the town manager's budget for the ability to hire a deputy town manager to be funded from free cash as soon as free cash is certified by the state.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Steve, I just have to ask, does that meet the free cash certified requirement?
I think it does. I mean, I'd probably put it in terms of more contingent on the certification of free cash. Because once free cash is certified, depending on how much, I mean, we're going to have enough, I think. But I'm just saying, I, we should have plenty. So at that point, once it's certified, we can move the money over. That's all. It's just wording. It's not, it's not, the spirit is there.
I, I think with your numbers tonight on your financial report and what we have, we, we should be fine.
I'm over, yeah. I have, I'm an accountant. I have to be somewhat comparative on that.
Thank you. With that being said, is there any further discussion before I call for a vote? Okay, here are none. Marilyn?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
I abstain.
Connor?
No.
And I am a yes. Okay, our next point of business. A discussion of meeting in person for future town council meetings. I think this is something that we can, we should consider doing. We used to be pre damp, pre pandemic, meet at the Council of Aging. I wanted to bring Don in. I know the state has talked something about doing some type of a hybrid and then they decided that we didn't have to do a hybrid. Do we have a capability if one of the counselors isn't present to be able to do a type of hybrid?
Yes. Yes. So as of your September meeting, the full hybrid capability will be available in the media room at the Council on Aging. So that any member of the public, just as they are in the audience tonight, can join the meeting virtually. Any member of the board or the council can, by necessity, join the meeting virtually, just like they're doing here. The I'm, I'm actually shifting over to recording for LCAT using the Zoom platform to capture the meeting and record it the way I have been. If you watch any of the school committee meetings, that's what we're doing there. The school building committee meetings, that's how we're doing it. So just going to have that technology now available for your next meeting at the senior center. And we'll be good to go.
That's good news. Thank you. I mean, I think what that does is if there's any concerns amongst the counselors or whatever, whether they want to be there or not, they can still zoom in. Same with the public. But in the essence, the rest of us could be there in person. I think it's important to start moving on from the pandemic the best we can with still being safe. But I would like to open it up to thoughts, Marilyn?
Thank you, Ralph. My thought is absolutely, I'd love to see you guys. You know, it's been a long time. My comment would be, is it capable for us to still somehow socially distance as counselors? Because I still have, I have COVID in my family right now. And it's there and I'm trying to avoid it. So are we able to still sit a little bit far apart from one another, Don? Or is it, are we going to be close together in that big podium?
Yep. So that's entirely up to the council and the, and the president as far as how you want to configure that room. I have, you know, sufficient microphones and cameras to be able to capture everything that takes place within that room. How you want to organize yourselves. I mean, within reason, everybody's got to be in view of the camera. But yeah, I, you know, that's a council decision, not, not an LCAT decision.
I see how you've done school and I see how you've done the planning board and, and whatnot in the Council on Aging Media Room. And we've used different tables, but there are more of us. So I just wasn't sure.
Yep. And, and again, you know, I think you, among yourselves, that's a determination that you make about how everybody's comfortable and feels safe in that space. And I, I, I think I can go pretty far accommodating that, whatever that needs to be.
Okay, I think it's a good idea.
Connor?
Thanks, Ralph. I like the idea of both. I'm certainly not opposed to going back in person to, you know, having a meeting, whether it's one a month or every couple of months or something in person. But I personally don't see the need for every single one of our council meetings to all be in person either. Perhaps if we had our, you know, first Tuesday of the month or whatever it is, we're going to have in person and then any special meetings thereafter, especially if they're on short notice. You know, being remote. Personally, it's been convenient after work, since I work from home most days a week, to just be able to sign off of one and sign on to another and not have to worry about racing from the office to wherever we're going to hold the meeting in person.
Mike?
I kind of feel it's, it's not one size fits all. I, I would agree with similar comments that Connor made, and I can only state historically what's taken place. And I'm, I'm going to speak in terms of attendance and I'm, and Kathy, I'm sure you can clarify that the attendance has certainly been much better with the council being able to zoom in because in terms of efficiency and people traveling their jobs, they can always make a meeting. And I believe that's what's most important to all of us is everybody wants to be at a council meeting. So we have options here. So really, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, let's, let's use those options as needed. When we have public, public hearings, there's a lot of people that might want to attend a public hearing where they're, they don't have the equipment or the expertise to be able to zoom in. And if we're doing interviews, we certainly switched our format around where we had those, those meetings live. So it's, it's not, in my feeling, a one size fits all. I don't, I don't mind meeting when there's, you know, a time and place for specific items that would, there'd be a obvious advantage to that I just stated. But we, we can run into situations this winter too, where we have inclement weather conditions and things like that. Or in terms of efficiency, when we're talking together, who's traveling, who's here and who's not? I find it more important to have a full board rather than possibly be short a quorum because people are traveling or such. So we have the flexibility and we'll use our heads. I'm sure it's your decision. And it's, you know, we have the options. That's, that's it.
Connor, before I go to you, so Don, what you had basically said is we have the option of doing a hybrid. So if four of the counselors were at home and zoomed in and the other ones were in the room, we can still do that.
Still do that.
Yep. So I think that, I, I think the hybrid way to go where our intention is to meet in person, but if a counselor can't make it and they're sitting at home on the computer, that, that works also. Don?
So I just have a question. This is a Gene question. Maybe you know the answer. So prior to COVID, their remote participation was allowed. I think even some of the forms of the legislation, as it was working its way through the House and Senate, included provisions that would require a minimum number of counselors to be in person. And I believe require the chair to be in person. But I, so I don't know where that stands at this point.
Yes.
I just want to remind you that that may or may not be an issue.
We talked about that today a little bit, but prior to COVID, if a board wanted to meet via remote participation, they had to adopt that specific national law. And I don't think the town ever did that. They talked about it. If any of you remember that. So I'd like to contact the Open Meeting Law and see what they're doing right now, based on the current events of today and the, and the acts that were just signed about remote participation.
That doesn't really impact me at all, but I know it has been an aspect of the discussion for the past year as what that legislation is going to look like if this is either extended or made permanent. And I just, as you're describing a meeting where four counselors may zoom from home and four may go or two may go and everybody else stays home. There may be some limitations on that that you need to be aware of. That's all.
Mary?
We did just get a, an opinion from the AG yesterday at our Westcom Board of Directors meeting on that very subject. So I'll share it with Jeannie. There's particular language in the notice of the meeting that has to specify that some people may be remote. And that the public has to have access and so forth. So I know it's allowable and I'll send you the language tomorrow, Jeannie.
Okay, because we had to have that paragraph following the agenda for every meeting if there's remote participation and it's not required if you're all in person. But hybrid, you're right, it's a different story. So yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
And Connor? I didn't, I didn't forget about you.
No, you're good. I think Mike also raised a good point too, that, I mean, not only there may be, whether it's a public hearing or something, certain members of the public that would find it easier to be in person. But even if we took tonight's meeting as an example, the opposite can also be true, depending on, you know, who the applicants are and where they are. I mean, they were in the eastern side of the state, so it's going to cost them more money and more time if they're driving two hours over to East Long Meadow, just to appear before us for a 30 minute presentation. It was easy for them to just sign in from where they were.
So I guess my hope would be that going forwards, they allow you know, remote participation and all at meetings. But we're going to deal with today. I know it's allowed. And so going forwards, I think that's our thought is it's going to be a hybrid type it's going to be a hybrid-type setup that we will be planning on using the Council of Aging. I'll talk to Jeannie ahead, like special meetings and all. We may just do straight on Zoom. But that will be in the notice going out to everyone. Any other thoughts? Okay, do we have any summary action items for the next meeting? So the next meeting, we are going to discuss Bailey along with the fuel-efficient vehicles. And Michael?
I that's what I was going to recap on Bailey, and I I do believe you might have asked Jonathan for some additional information to move forward as well.
So Jonathan's going to be bringing that to his CPC board, which meets the first week in September. And if he's got to bring it back to us, we're going to have to hold it at a public hearing. So I don't know if that would even be possible or not in that short timeframe. But yes, I will keep in touch with Jonathan going forwards. There is no executive session tonight. Do I hear any motion for adjournment?
I moved to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Everyone wants to stay for a while longer? Hearing none. Marilyn? You're muted, but I saw your lips say yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Matt? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Michael?
I'm I, yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Thank you all very much. I look forward to our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rest your night.
Thank you.